How are we all? So Julie, would you block everybody's phone, please?
I will try. Zoom has changed the rules. Some people will be able to unmute themselves. But we'll give it a go. And hopefully, everybody will follow, will not chime in unless you allow them to communicate.
Right. I thought you could block them.
You could a month ago. You could actually.
All right, well, commission members, you should mute your thing until you're, unless you have something to say. And people of the public, it's not a public hearing, so you really need to respect that. Zoom meetings are very difficult. I'm sick of them, but it's what we have to do. So I will call to order the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for June 23, 2020. This is the first, and I hope last, Zoom meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetland Commission. Our next meeting in July, I'm hopeful, will be in person because I do miss everybody. So I have a call to order. Who's here from the commission?
Rob Horrigan.
Nice view, Rob. They tax you for that?
They do. Twenty-five percent.
John Smolleg.
Sue Fitch.
Anybody else? No?
Andy's here.
Andy, you here?
Looks like he's on mute.
Yeah, he's saying he can't unmute himself, but he's here.
And Russ, I don't know how I'm supposed to mute myself.
There's a little. Yeah.
Okay. I have the dogs downstairs, so I'll just leave it as is.
Tell the dogs to behave. All right, we do have a, we do have a quorum. There are four regular members who are all have the DEP certification. That's good. So we'll seat all four of us. Approval of a minutes of the regular meeting from May 26, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll abstain. I wasn't there.
Good for you, Sue.
I'll move to approve them.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Old Business. We'll move to Old Business. You know what's not in here? Usually, we have communications with the public, and I don't want to stop that tradition, which we've had for 25 years. So anybody from the public, if you have something to say, concerns about the wetland commission or wetlands in town, now's your time. This is why we, it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to allow it. Nobody? We're all happy then. That's, that's a wonderful thing. We should be. It's a great town. I want to thank everybody who came out for the senior graduation Saturday night for the parade, which was awesome. I know my son said it was better than any graduation he could ever hope for, and all three towns really made it happen. It was awesome. Roxbury, by the way, had the most people out on the street, so I'm proud of our town, and I'm glad that happened. So I'll move on to Sacks, Ten Falls Road, replaced driveway culvert, report on site visit. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
No, no, this is for Ten Falls Road.
Oh.
Are you buying that too?
I am.
Is the engineer here for the Sacks? I guess he's not, huh?
No, he's here. He's muted.
Julie, are you able to unmute him? This happened at the eighth grade graduation. You might want to just try.
Okay, I think I'm live. Can you hear me?
You're live. There you go. You got a lot of trees behind you.
Ron Wolf, representing the applicant, Bradley Sacks.
Okay, Ron, Rob and I went out last night, which was good to see Rob again, and we looked at it, and we have no concerns. We think it's the right way to go.
Okay.
We did talk about a three-sided culvert, and amazingly, you know, it doesn't fit all. It doesn't fit all situations. It doesn't fit this one, in my, in my humble opinion. The pipe that you're going to replace has created a large pool at the end of it, and there's a lot of fish living in there.
Yeah.
And upstream of that is, it's, the stream is pretty much dry, so fish couldn't get through anyway. And if we did a three-sided culvert, that pool would go away.
Right.
And right now, it's, it's creating a habitat that is protecting fish in these hard times. If you think we have it hard, they have it really hard. We need to pray for rain. So Rob, do you have anything to add?
No, I just was wondering what's going to happen with all that, the boulders that are, you know, retaining the bank on both sides, the big, large boulders.
Well, we're probably gonna, the plan calls for some large riprap along the wing walls to armor the wing walls, so we're going to just stockpile all that and, and use it right there to, you know,
Okay, good.
Put against the walls, you know, for armoring when, when the new structure is up. That's the intent.
And then I noticed some trees, some maple trees on the, let's see, on the, on the south side.
Yeah.
Those are coming down.
Just, just within the limits of like where the silt fence is and where the, where the excavation's going to be required to get the walls in. Other than that, you know, maybe fifteen or twenty feet around the perimeter of the walls in the box culvert, I would say.
And then you're overseeing this?
Yeah, that, that, I don't know exact, my, my, the amount of what my inspection would be, but I, I know we'll be providing the stakeout services and some, some of will be there on site during, you know, some of the installation, probably not the whole, you know, assembly of it, but during the critical parts of it, yeah.
And how long is the process, the construction?
We estimate it to be about a week, probably a day or day and a half to, to remove the old structure and set up a bypass, and then two or three days to assemble the, the new structure. It's basically all bolted together. And then, you know, you put it together right in place. You lay, you lay the floor, and then you start bolting it all together. And then a couple of days to backfill and, and get the driveway restored.
Russ, I, I do feel that we maybe should, that we should require the engineer to do a few inspections during the process.
It's a given.
Yeah.
It's a given. It will be part of the approval if the commission votes to approve. So with that, any other questions from the commission? Julie, could you try to unmute Andy?
I'm unmuted, Russ.
Oh, there you go, Andy. Good to see you. Hope you're well.
I'm well. Good seeing you.
The breweries are open, Andy. We gotta go soon.
Sounds like a plan.
So anybody have any other questions?
So my only question is, is that they specified that they were going to have how much, how far buried for the culvert of the stream bed over it?
Have a minimum of 12 inches of stream bed material inside the box culvert.
Okay, so I think that's what we've learned in the past. That's the important part that should be inspected and reviewed.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Yeah, we will pay attention to that, and we'll, we'll make a stockpile of the, the natural stream bed material to be used, you know, for inside the culvert, and that'll be a combination of soil and, you know, stones, whatever comes out of the stream bed.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity with the condition, the condition that the engineer does, I, I, if it's a week-long process, I'd say every second or third day in inspection.
Yeah, I'd say every other day, Rob, to make it clearer.
Okay, every other day.
Anything else?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sue, you mentioned we should inspect after, and I agree, because we've, we've seen these before, and then they put it in, and it doesn't work.
Well, I think the more important part, Russ, is not, you know, at the, at the end, but I like that the fact that if there's going to be inspection every other day, but like we have had history with, you know, the requirements, and then come to find out that it's not buried as deep as that it's, it's supposed to be with the, you know, with the right soil and rock covering on it.
Yeah, okay, so Ron, we're going to want you as part of the motion to inspect it when it's done to make sure that substrate is done properly and sign off on that.
That's fine.
Okay, so I have a, a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Who's abstaining?
I'm abstaining. I wasn't at the previous presentation.
Okay, I'm just making sure it makes it easier for Julie, who's taking notes, minutes, actually, which I think I missed that, didn't I? Okay, so, all right, so this passes. Thank you, Ron, and.
Much, y'all.
Look forward to a good, good project. Thank you.
Updated. Thank you.
Yeah. Did I miss approval of a minutes, Julie?
No, you got it. Rob and John approved that.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay. All right, we'll go on to New Business, LaFonte, 37 Painter Ridge Road, Singer Family Dwelling. Kind of surprised this is on here because I talked to John Cady about it. It is a house, but there are no wetlands anywhere nearby. Brian Neff did all the engineering, confirmed that's, there's no wetlands. I thought John was going to sign off as a non-regulated activity, but I guess not. So we could vote on it. Makes it cleaner.
Is it, Russ, just a quick question, so I, because I didn't, I don't know, quite know where the property is located, so there's no issues with, even though there's not wetlands, there's no issues with gradient or adjoining properties or anything close to adjoining properties with wetlands?
No, he addressed all those drainage issues. I, I think we were emailed today, the application and the maps, and I didn't expect it, so, and Julie probably can't bring it up. I don't know. Can you, Julie?
I've kind of got a couple of stuff, stuff loaded right now, and when I bring it up, let me see if I can grab it, and hopefully without technical difficulties, because that's one of the quirks of Zoom. You open too much, it shuts you down.
Right. The map, just the map is all we need.
Andy, it looks like you brought a friend to the meeting tonight.
It did, yeah. Came for a visit. That was Owen. Here's my alarm clock. Four forty-five every morning.
Four forty-five?
Yep.
Oh, wow. I thought my guys were bad at five fifteen.
Sell your cats.
I've got a map for LaFonte. I'm going to be sharing momentarily.
All right.
Yeah.
Move it over a little.
Move it over a little. It's not cooperating.
Use the bar right at the map. There's a bar to the right of the map, Julie, not all the way to the edge. There you go. By that one.
There's that one. And let's see if we can get this pulled out a little bit more. So unfortunately, that's pretty much where we are. That's the first map. That is a better map.
There you go. It's eight acres. One house down on the road. It's down from the road. There's nothing behind it. But if the commission's uncomfortable, we could put this off to another meeting, but I thought John was going to approve it as non-regulated, because it clearly is.
I don't see any wetlands within the regulated area. I'm not even sure why we have this application in front of us.
I didn't either, but again, John emailed me and said, should I approve this? And I said, sure, make sure you use the one-page, the two-page form and not the regular application, because you can't sign those. So you could take it down, Julie. That's not a big deal. I'll, I'll make a motion to prove this is a non-regulated activity based on Brian Neff's engineering.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now Julie, are you gonna, are you going to be able to allow Mark to take control of the screen so he could?
Absolutely. I also have a map that Jimmy was also nice enough to share with us. Jimmy was able to cut out of the packet.
Right, which I, which I shared with several people who I know might be interested. So I'll move on to the Woods at Roxbury LLC, 206 Nord Street, residential six-lot subdivision. This is the same lot where there was an 11-lot subdivision with a road that was denied by the commission for several reasons, one being they couldn't meet DEP stormwater permit. This application is six lots with no road. You wouldn't need a DEP stormwater application. That application extended the road beyond what Roxbury Planning Commission allows by 700 feet, which they might give a waiver for, but if they didn't, we'd have a problem, so, things like that. The motion is a couple of pages long and it's pretty clear. This is a different application. Same property, same 64 acres, six driveways off of 199. Margaret, for some reason, you're showing up. I don't know why. Does everybody just see Margaret?
I don't know. I think I'm on video, but I'm sort of shrinking back.
If you can mute your mic.
Oh, aren't I muted?
Yeah. Mute your video. That way, I know it's a very complicated thing, but anyway. So we, we have a different application. It's six driveways going to six lots this time around. There are no crossings of wetlands. There are incursions into the buffer zone, about a half acre. And I want to remind the commission about a couple of things before we go forward. First of all, we, if you go into a buffer zone, it's regulated. That's it. It's regulated. It doesn't mean that the commission could look at it as if it was going into wetlands. It just means that because it's going into our 100-foot buffer zone, it is a regulated activity, and we have to look at it that way. Therefore, there won't be any decision made tonight. Second of all, the courts have ruled over the past few years that we can no longer deny an application because of potential. It has to be a high level of likelihood, and I want to remind you, I know you all know that, but I want to remind you, the old potential thing, the courts are making it harder for wetland commissions to approve or deny things based on just the potential. It's got to be a real thing. And we cannot regulate buffer zones as if they're wetlands. We could only regulate buffer zones if the activity in the buffer zone could directly impact the wetland, and that means no more potential to impact, but a high likelihood to impact. So I've reviewed this all over the weekend. I've reviewed in detail everything, so I'm pretty up on it. So I will turn the mic over to Mark Lakora Dymar, engineers.
Russ, I'm going to step down from this one.
Okay, that's because you're on the land trust?
Yeah.
But the land trust has nothing to do with it, but it's up to you, John. I don't see your conflict, but I'm cool.
Probably be better if I did.
Okay, anybody else? Rob Horrigan stepped down from the last application, and the reason why he did is because he worked for, he hires Paul Shimansky, who was the engineer on that one, for a lot of his projects. He had four going at the time, so he was advised to step down, even though he didn't need to. He, he made the right choice, I think. He is not affiliated, Rob, you're not affiliated with Dymar in any way?
I am not.
So there's no reason for you to step down, right?
No reason.
Andy?
The only, no, there's no reason for me to step down. I have a minor involvement with the land trust, but I don't see that as a conflict at all.
Right. I have no reason to step down. I love the land trust. I support the land trust. I give as much as I can to the land trust, but I also have made it clear in other applications that Dymar does work with Arcatis, which is the company that I'm a vice president of, a global company. But we work with Dymar when their clients, when our clients tell us to hire Dymar because, for the surveying services for environmental land use restrictions, we don't hire them direct. I do know Jill and Raj. They, since the last application, I've become friends with them, but it doesn't impact my decision at all. But I want to put it out there, as my lawyer told me, and this was his words, is you're friends with everybody. So if, if I had to step down because I'm friends with somebody, I couldn't be on this commission, and that's a fact, and I don't think anybody could be on this commission. But I'm not hiding anything. I'm upfront, and I'm telling everybody the facts, so that's where we're at. So Mark, why don't you take it over?
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Mark Lakora is a principal here at Dymar, located in Southbury, Connecticut. Julie, I don't know if it's easy to share the screen with me, because I can, I, I've got some material I can bring up. I don't know.
Actually, you, you're allowed to share. You have permission.
Okay.
Yeah, you can share right now.
Okay, so I'm going to open up a couple of drawings. So here's the first one. Just, you know, for the commission's sake, a little bit of history. I mean, there is a lot of history with the property. I'm very familiar with, you know, with the record. A lot of controversy was over this particular application the last time it came before the commission. And, and since that time, I, I will say that my client is, which is, you know, is the Woods at Roxbury LLC, you know, Jill and Raj, have gone to great extent over the last, you know, nine months, 10 months, to try to come to some sort of agreement with the land trust and the folks in town about purchasing this particular property, and in fact, purchasing even on the west side. But to, to, to no luck for the land trust, they could not come to an agreement, and, and therefore, you know, Jill and Raj have to move on, and they have elected to develop both the west side and the east side of North Street.
Hey, Mark, on that note, I did want to say this, just so everybody knows, because we get a lot of calls whenever there's activity out there. One lot on the west side is sold. The other lot, there's been an offer on it. There will be activity on those lots this summer, or because the potential owners want to get going. There will be activity. There will be trees being cut down. There will be pipes being put in the wetlands. There will be driveways being created. Those people will need to come before the wetland commission again for the specific development of the house sites, not of the driveways. The driveways have been approved. John Cody and I meet with Mark, and Mark of Earth Artists regularly. We're all over it. We, we don't need calls. The wetland commission depends on the public to tell us about complaints, tell us about wetland violations. There's no doubt about that. It's a gift to us to have you be in our eyes and ears. But when we know about an application, we approve something, we're all over it. We really are. We don't mess around in this town. So the police went out there one day, and everything that they were told was going on was not going on. We, it doesn't help us to do that. So I'm asking, I'm telling you that lots are going to sell, those two lots on the west side. One's sold, one's going, and this area is going to become very popular because of the COVID, fortunately, and unfortunately, depending on how you want to look at it. People are going to develop their properties. We know it. If we approve it, we're on it. Please know that. That's all I ask. Okay, Mark, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, this piece of property is 64.8 acres. There is approximately 4.7 acres of wetlands. As you can see in the picture, it's denoted in the darker green. The lighter green is the upland review area, which encompasses about 22.2 acres of the property. And those areas that you note that are in kind of a reddish color are the actual rock outcroppings that are on property themselves, and the steep slopes are located, are noted in the, in the grayish tone. I don't have to tell the commission much really beyond that regarding the property. You've got a history with it. There's been a lot of work that's been done in this property. I'm making it as far as the, the record is concerned. Anything that is in the record currently, we've asked to be incorporated so that no one's duplicating work going forward. So, you know, with that, I'm going to bring up the second image. So this is what the subdivision application is now looking like. Again, it's six lots. The lots vary in size from anywhere from a little over six acres up to in excess of 15 acres. All the lots have access off of North Street. You will notice that in the north, northeast corner, there is 10 acres of open space that is being dedicated. That will be private open space for the luxury of the people who actually will be buying these lots. And in terms of, you know, in terms of impacts, there is minimal, minimal impacts here. In fact, to, to follow up on Chairman's notes is that there are actually no direct impacts to any wetlands at all on the property. We've gone through great liberty to examine this property to find the prime sites for where houses can be built and driveways can be accessed and utilities can be installed. And we have sighted houses in some of the most, really nicest areas on the site that are conducive to building a house and, and would have the pleasure of these very large lots accessing on North Street. You know, one of the things that has come up over the history of this particular site is the, the existing house that sits at the pinnacle corner there that has created the real sightline problems for both the state and the town over the years due to the location of the house and close proximity to the street. That house is going to be removed, and the sightlines are going to be significantly improved along North Street to the benefit of people that drive up and down that road. I can tell you that many times that I have visited the site, it is very difficult to get out of that driveway, and you're really taking your life in your hands. This proposal now, I know it's not a wetlands issue, but it is something that is going to be brought into the project. And in fact, the house is going to be the location of a new water quality basin. Now, you think about it. You got a house. It's got a full eight-foot basement foundation. Now, you think about it. You got a house that's got a full eight-foot basement foundation. What are you gonna do with the hole? Well, we're looking at opportunities and we've taken a look at many opportunities on the site to find areas to improve water quality and to also control the runoff that comes off of this site. Uh, and to that point, um, you know, we've minimized the runoff. Uh, we've submitted a drainage study that was, um, she, uh, sent to the, to the, uh, to the office today through our share file system. Uh, it's over five hundred, it's over, uh, five hundred pages. Very, uh, very, uh, comprehensive drainage study that looked at, uh, all the, uh, wetland crossing, uh, the, the culverts and the wetlands and how they interact with the hydrology in the area. And we also provided the form to the office, uh, the Connecticut DEP form as well. So we're very excited about this. Um, I think it's a great plan. Uh, it addresses everything that, uh, you could imagine that was some of the difficulty with the last application. Uh, there has been, uh, talk and evidence that there was a vernal pool up in the northeast corner of the property. Uh, it's one of the larger wetlands. Um, the closest activity now to that vernal pool is over five hundred feet away. Um, and the open space is preserving that area. So I think, uh, we've done everything, uh, that is, uh, expected of just good site planning. And, uh, I presented now a, uh, application to the commission that I hope that you will look favorably on. And one thing I will ask the commission, if they can think about this, uh, in terms of making a decision, is as much as it is a regulated activity in the buffer area, uh, the areas that we've noted, uh, you can see they're kind of in a brownish color on the, on the site, on the plan. Um, these, uh, areas, uh, the one for lot one is probably the most extensive. It's, uh, it's basically handling the slope of a, uh, of the driveway. But the remaining activities are directly associated with everything along North Street and the hundred foot step back to the wetlands that is on the western side of the property. Not even associated with the buffer on this side of the property. So we find that it's extremely to be insignificant and we would hope that the commission in their discussion can make a determination that as much as there is a regulated activity, that the activity is insignificant. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I can be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have. I also have Bill Kenny with me tonight. Uh, he is our soil scientist and a wetland biologist, somebody I've been working with for years. Uh, and, 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 and has done his job in reviewing the record and, uh, but we can save that for another date if, uh, if, if the commission wants.
Yep. Uh, could you bring up the plan? The actual driveways and?
Uh, that's, I, I'll, uh, if you give me a second, I'm gonna have to go get them. The luxury of technology.
Understood. The drainage on the driveways, what year storm are they?
They're all designed for over, for a hundred year storm.
Okay.
So I am gonna open up, this is the actual application. So here I'm gonna give you, for example, this is lot number one. Um, so some of this stormwater treatment train that we're using here is we're using a combination of a multiple things. We're using infiltration, uh, we're using rain gardens, uh, we're using a, uh, system that's an underground system that sits right in the driveway.
We're not seeing it, um, Mark. We're, we're, I'm still seeing the same.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'm still seeing the same.
I see the original.
Stop the share on, you're first, then you should be able to put up a second that everyone can see.
Okay. Oh, you're right. I forgot. I have to go back into the, it says screen sharing has stopped as your shared window is closed.
But Mark, you can't put the whole thing up?
Uh, well, the whole thing's a hundred, um, is, is on a hundred scale. You can, it's, it's very difficult. You can do one lot at a time, but I can't do it, uh, you know, I can, I can get the, there's three sheets that'd be relevant. Now let me just see. Am I still being able to share the screen?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so let me. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So now, this is the full set of drawings, so I'll be able to click through them, okay?
But wait, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen because I got a good drawing. Uh, you can't do it at the same time you are. You sent me a colored drawing today, Mark, which I did share with, uh, everybody who's interested.
Try it now.
That was the one I just had up. That was the hundred scale one I just had up?
No, because the one I have shows driveways, houses, everything.
Yeah, that was the one. That, I had that up on the screen. Let me see if I can bring it back up again.
That was on my screen. Yeah, Mark, that never came up.
It never came up? Okay.
All we saw was the, uh, which is why people are scratching their heads and.
Okay, well, we don't want anybody scratching their head. So let me, uh, let me get the, that drawing if I can. I, it's this one right here. Now, can you see that or not?
No.
Okay, so let me, I gotta go back to see your screen share as paused. That's why. Uh, resume share. Can you see that? Nope.
Same thing, only smaller.
Uh, so this, are you looking at any kind of drawing on the screen?
Yeah, the lot one.
Oh, let me, let me just do this again. I gotta go stop.
Index of all your other drawings, I think on the left.
Huh.
There you go.
Mark, yeah.
You have that now?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, so there's a drawing. If you can make it a little bigger, Mark, you know, bring the percentage up.
Uh, sure.
Okay, now that, this, this gives everybody an idea of what, what, what the plan is, okay?
And I'll, and I'll move it down. So, you know, you can see with, with lot one, um, one thing I'm looking for, uh, annotate. You can, one of the things you can do is you can, you know, annotate by, uh, with a pen. You know, so, I mean, this is lot one. This is the primary area right here where the initial impact was. That's in the upland query.
The crossing was in that area down below.
Yes.
The road, the road was coming in right, right there.
It came in, this is how the road came in before.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, a lot of commission members have been out there multiple times and just to give them a sense.
Yep. So, so this tells you.
Where, where's the house?
The house? I'll tell you again.
White House, the White House.
The White House. You want the White House. I'm gonna.
That's where that little pond is shown?
Yeah, it's right. Uh, annotate. It's right here.
Yeah, okay.
Right there. So that pond, which is a water quality basin now, we're converting that space into kind of a, it's gonna be a water quality basin. It's gonna actually have a, a wet basin there, which is, is gonna actually improve water quality coming off the site.
Are, are those other blue, um, markers on the map?
These are all water, these are all, uh, water quality basins, all here.
So you're not just building driveways and putting swales and letting all the water run down to North Street on a bay?
No, it's, um, one of, what, one of the challenges that everybody has when it comes to drainage is understanding drainage patterns. And you try to mimic those drainage patterns. So if you look at what good practice is, that's what you're doing. So that's what we've done here. We've actually looked at the drainage patterns and make sure that they are gonna mimic what's out in the field currently. So for example, on lot number two, and, and I keep telling my client that I find lot number two, one of the most spectacular lots on the property. If you go up there, this is a beautiful platform that overlooks the area. There is a section right here that is gonna be a, uh, a, a rain garden. And the reason for it is, is because it's naturally a, a, a depressed area. But this rain garden will help take care of the water that comes off of this particular lot before it gets released, even into the buffer. And you still have another hundred feet of buffer before you actually get to the wetlands. So, now, we, we've taken a look at every single lot in respect to what is there. We've, uh, tested the soils. We've looked at the, uh, several, uh, spent two days of test bits, which I understand, we were told that we were digging in a vernal pool, which we never did. We weren't even up in that area of the site. So, um, but it was, uh, we, we, we've, uh, looked at all of the, uh, the soils to make sure that these basins work. We have infiltration, for example, on lot number four, we have an infiltration system here. Water comes down here, then goes into this, uh, wet basin here, which is also helps control runoff. Um, when you move up further up to the other two lots, five and six, to the north, you know, they're much, those lots are much different. They have a much different setting than the lots to the south.
Right, those were lots, uh, ten and eleven, right?
Yes, they were ten and eleven.
They haven't really changed much other than they're larger?
Uh, they're larger, but what they did change is the location of the driveway. The prior application looked at taking the driveway from a lower point on the road to bring it up to a higher point, which created a much more, uh, more significant earthwork in trying to get the driveway to access to the site. What we've done is, what you normally do is you would take it from the high side of the house, of the, of the lot, so that the driveway that comes in is more gradual and you have less disturbance on the site. So that's what's happened with lot five, and lot five has these underground infiltration systems to help mitigate, uh, drainage coming off of that site.
All, all the roof drainage on the proposed houses will be on two infiltration systems?
Infiltration, or like on lot six, we've got three parts of a treatment train. We have two rain gardens. These, this is a rain garden.
Yeah.
This is a rain garden. And then this is an infiltration, uh, system as well with a combination rain garden. So.
So Mark, on, uh, septic systems, all, all six lots pass septic.
Yes, yes, yeah, and we.
And all those systems are over a hundred feet from wetlands, even though the, I believe the health department allows them within twenty-five feet?
Fifty feet, fifty feet.
Which I have a problem with, but that's, that's the health code, but.
Right, so the septic system.
You're not going by the health code, you, you're staying out.
Oh, we are. So lot number one septic is right here. Lot number two septic is right here. Lot number three septic is right here. Lot number four septic is right here. Five is right here and six is right here.
And, and the soils in those areas were well drained?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, the soils as you go up to the, uh, as you go to the higher, uh, elevations in the property, uh, the till gets a little tighter, but it's not, it's not that it's undoable. Uh, what I found is on lots five and six, they're very well drained.
Okay.
Uh, and which, you know, and, and, and we, our primary focus was not just looking at the, how well drained they were, but we were also looking at where bedrock was. Um, DEP guidelines for infiltration systems on bedrock is four feet above the bedrock, no different than a septic system. So, you know, we have designed these systems to meet the DEP guidelines.
Okay, now the curvy driveways, like, uh, lot four is very curved. Is that due to ledge?
Uh, it's two parts. Uh, two parts is, uh, elevation change in order to meet your grade. You know, in our dry, in our package, uh, we have provided full driveway plan and profile sheets to meet the town's standards for driveway construction. But if you're gonna honestly, if you've got to go from point A to point B, you're gonna need a, a certain amount of length to be able to do that.
So all these driveways meet the, uh, Roxbury driveway code without a waiver?
Yes, without a waiver. Um, and in fact, uh, the driveway code looks at that within roughly around four hundred feet or so, you need to have a widened area on these longer driveways.
Right.
Uh, we have one on lot four and we have two on lot, on, on lot three, including, which is unique here, is that we have a complete turnaround at the front end of the house. So I actually have three on lot number three. Uh, one of the things that we've done with the way the individual lots are, like on lot two and lot number six, they're conducive to be able to have full, full turnarounds in the front end of the house, which also helps with, uh, public safety.
Right, so other commission members, if you have questions, please don't let me bully you here. I, I just have a lot of questions and I want to make sure they get answered, but I don't want anybody to feel like they can't butt in and shut me up, but.
Mark, what are the?
So Mark, Mark, one, one thing I'd like to see, because this is the big thing.
Right.
Is show us where you're going into buffer zones and tell us why.
So lot number one is right here.
Yeah, I see.
The reason is, is because of, of, of grade to get from point A to point B, to get up to, there's a terrace here for where the house is sitting at. The slopes, you, you, you need length to be able to do that, and we also want to try to minimize as much of the cuts as we can. So we have a, we have a, 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 a cut on one side and we have a fill on this side. This is a unavoidable, in order to be able to service lot one, you cannot come up in this direction to service this lot and being able to catch grade to put a house in. You just can't do it. We looked at it, it's not doable.
What's the closest distance to the wetlands? What, what's that distance swing?
It's thirty feet from this point to this point, but I think one of the things that you'll find unique about this lot is that there's a substantial stone wall that runs down alongside of the wetland and through this one.
Oh, that's right. I know that. Yep, okay.
So, you know, it's, it, stone walls are great barriers, you know, and, and for the most part, except for this little pin, this is thirty feet. Majority of this area here, this is like sixty-five, you know, over here, you're up in seventy feet. It's just that with this grading is, there's a little point here that's thirty feet to this way.
Okay, next, next one?
The next one is on lot number two. It's this little piece right here.
Yeah.
And that's at least ninety feet away from the wetlands. Now, it's grading. As we know, that we have in the front end of some of these lots, is that there are rock outcroppings. We have shown all of our grading at two to one slopes.
Right.
In reality, these slopes are gonna be pulled back. One, you're gonna be looking at, uh, you know, one, six. So these grade points are gonna be pulled back. This is never gonna happen. But because the regulations indicate that you look at slopes at a one to two slope, that's how we've done everything on this site. Recognizing that, that in the end of the day, that these slopes are gonna be tightened up.
Okay, and it's similar on the other lots, the long lot, you got a little incursion there.
Right here, the only reason that this is here is because we're, and that's where the house is, which is already in the upland review area.
Yeah.
It's here because of the wetlands across the street. We're not, it has nothing to do with the wetlands on site. And then this section right here is the same thing. We have our, uh, cottage, the existing cottage, which they are, uh, it's gonna be retained. This is a rental property. Uh, this section right here is, uh, about seventy-five, eighty feet to the, to the wetland here. And then again, this is just grading, just grading at this point here.
Right.
Uh, up here on lot number three, um, again, we're looking at grades that are, uh, you know, this is just a slight cut slope on this edge of the driveway.
And down, downhill from that, Mark, is the, uh, intermittent wetland that.
This is an intermittent water course right here.
This is the first time?
Yes.
It was missed by the first soil scientist?
Yes, yes.
Alright, just wanna make sure.
So we're, we're showing it between this point and this point, but I think one of the things that's important to understand here is that there's a ridge that got, goes right through this section right here.
Yeah.
Everything that feeds this side is coming down from the hill and off of this point to the ridge. We are basically on the other side of the ridge. So we really have nothing to do with any effect on this water course or this wetland system.
Does anybody else have questions? Does anybody else have questions? Because after others ask, I'm going to ask the environmental, what's his name, Mark?
His name is Bill Kenny.
Bill, I, I know, I know of Bill. Um, so Rob, Andy, anything?
I guess, so there's, there's about 42 acres of, um, non-buffer wetland area?
Yes, so if your math is correct, we got 22.2 acres of buffer area.
Oh, his math's correct.
4.7, 4.7 acres of wetlands, so you're talking about, you know, roughly 46, 40, you're talking 27 acres of regulated area.
Okay.
Of which 64.8 acres is, is the total property.
And what's the total of the, of the non-regulated, non-regulated area? What percentage of that is disturbed?
Of the non-regulated area? I'd have to get you that number in terms of acreage. I believe, and I, I know that we have that number, um, in terms of how much disturbance. What I can tell you this, is that impervious area, the total impervious area coverage of this property now is 2.5%. And I'm going to let Bill Kenny speak why that is so important. There are plenty of studies out there that suggest when you're down to this low number in terms of impervious coverage, you will, you, it's, it's, the impacts, you don't have impacts, because you have enough, you have enough vegetative buffers between points of imperviousness that you end up maximizing your, uh, in terms of pollutant removal when you are under 10%. So, but Bill Kenny, is, um, is there any questions that you have for Bill?
Oh, let's, let's hold up. I just want any questions that the commission has at this point. And then we're going to go to Bill. Andy, Sue, you have anything?
I'm good so far.
Okay.
I do have a question. So that open space area that's next to lot three, so is that where you were talking about as far as, um, for the property owners? That was going to be their space to use?
This is going to be private open space. It's going to be, it's open space, you can't develop, you can't do anything, but it's going to be private open space.
Okay, what's the acreage of that area?
A little over 10 acres, yeah.
Okay, all right. So there's not going to be any kind of construction that will be able to take place on there as far as?
No, not at all.
As far as any of the homeowners, as far as?
It's a conservation easement, Sue, so they, they own it, so people can't run around on it, but they, they can't do anything with it.
Okay, I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Bill, um, welcome. I, I know you've never been before a commission, it was, I don't remember you. Um, but I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
Um, you know, this is a much different proposal than the other one, because the other one where the words say open space, there was a house they had sitting right there, uh, right at the headwaters of a stream, which really concerned the commission. Um, well, people talked during that about a vernal pool in the middle of that wetlands behind there. And I went out there with the owner's permission to kind of, I'm not a soil scientist, I'm a geologist. I hate when soil scientists act like geologists and vice versa, so. Um, is, is there a vernal pool in the middle of that wetlands, in your opinion?
Uh, good evening, let me just say, um, thank you for allowing me to participate this evening. Um, Bill Kenny, I'm the principal of William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. I am a professional wetland scientist, soil scientist. I'm not a geologist, um, also happen to be a landscape architect with about 30 years of experience and a degree in environmental management from the Yale School of Forestry. So, and let me just step back and give you an overview of what my involvement is to date in that, uh, we are going to be submitting a written report. We haven't completed our evaluation yet, um, but we're pretty far along, just about done. Um, and we've reviewed the file from the denial and we've, uh, investigated the property. And, uh, so putting together a comparison of the previous development and the current development and, and making our conclusions. Based on what I've seen so far, based on our preliminary review, it, you know, this really looks like a good, a very good plan and it's, you know, at this point, I'm not seeing anything where I would see any type of adverse impact to the wetlands based, based on this plan, but we are finishing up our review. With regard to your question about the vernal pool, so we were not engaged at the time of breeding would have been occurring, but I have to tell you, when I looked at the pool recently, or that area, that wetland, I frankly, I was surprised that people have found that that area has been moved by obligate vernal, vernal pool species. Uh, and, and the reason I say that is that, um, you know, the obligate species that you're often, when, when that term is used, it's salamanders and frogs such as the wood frog or the spotted salamander. And, and those animals lay their eggs in standing water in the, in the spring. Uh, those eggs hatch and then the young need to live in that pool of water for a couple of months until they're of an age where they can then leave the pool and go live in the forest the rest of the year. Uh, and, and so it's, uh, vernal pools create that special habitat. If they, um, are permanent bodies of water, you end up with fish there that are predators and, and would eat the eggs, so you're not going to get the breeding and development. What's, what's important is you have both eggs that hatch and that young that then develop and are able to reach an age where they, or a level of development where they can go with it. And when you, when you have that, you have a two to three months of standing water. Often, you don't find a heavily vegetated wetland when that is the case, because the water also prevents, um, uh, most vegetation from, from surviving, particularly the ground, ground cover like sedges and skunk cabbage and things like that. So I was pretty surprised to see how densely vegetated this wetland is. And, and that, in my experience, expertise in wetlands and soils and hydrology, um, I was, it, it, when I see so much vegetation, it says to me that the, that wetland does a pool for extended periods of time and that perhaps there might be eggs there from time to time, but, um, I would expect there wouldn't be enough time for the development of the larvae of, of the salamanders or the frogs to survive. But we approached this, since we weren't involved with, during a breeding season, we approached this with the assumption that, that it is a, uh, a wetland area that does support the breeding and development. And even with that in mind, uh, you know, it's our conclusion at this time that this project will not have any adverse effect on that wetland or its potential to, um, breed, for the breeding and development of obligate vernal pool species.
Okay, a lot of people have voiced to me the concern about the west side, even though it's not a part of the property, it doesn't matter to the wetland commission whether it's on the same parcel or not. Could you speak to any impacts on the west side of Route 199 that the subdivision may have?
Sure. So when we think of impacts, we think of what we consider direct impacts activities in the wetland itself. And so we're, we're really happy to see that that crossing has been removed, the road's been removed, 2,000 linear feet of road have been removed and no direct wetland impacts. So, and indirect impacts, uh, that would be where you have the wetland on the west side, off-site, like you mentioned, and some activity on the east side of the road leaves something to impact on the west side. And so that's, on a project like this, that's primarily related to, uh, water, the movement of water and carrying pollutants, whether it be sediment or pollutants from a sanitary discharge. And, um, based on this development, one, let's talk about the sanitary. As, as Mark has described, there's great separation distances between the proposed septic systems. The systems will be designed accordance with the Department of Health standards. Uh, so these systems are more than 100 feet from the wetlands. Uh, and based on that, and based on the low number of these systems, we're essentially, the, the previous project had 11 new lots, but it also had the existing house, so it really was a 12-lot residential development. And now we're at a six-lot residential development, so you've reduced the number of septic systems by 50%. Um, and, and you eliminated one that might have been substandard, you know, for an older, older home. Um, and now, uh, so the septic systems, I think, are in great shape for avoiding it to wetlands either onsite or west of the site. And then the next thing is the stormwater management. Two primary components of that, one is management during construction and the other is after construction. Uh, after construction, Mark has gone through and, uh, described the various, uh, measures that are proposed from the rain gardens to the subsurface infiltration chambers and, uh, and so forth. And we'll be able to get into greater detail on that in people meeting.
Right, and it makes more sense to do it, do it then. Does anybody have any questions for Bill? No? Okay. Um, I, I suggest that we, um, all take a hike together. Not together, no more than two, of course, because otherwise we have a meeting. Um, again, the owners of the property have to give us permission to do that and we will email you, Mark, on when we'll do it, who will do it, so they know.
Are the, um, are the driveways marked?
No, they're not, but I, I will tell you, that's a lot of work to try to do that, if it's at all possible. I, I know this property, I've been going up and down. I know exactly how every driveway is going to go, where the house lots are going to be.
So you would meet us, Mark?
I would be happy to do that.
It might be two or three times, though.
That's fine, that is fine. I, I'll do it, I'll do it a dozen times if that's what it takes.
Okay, that's fair enough. So the commission has a couple decisions to make tonight. Um, one is if it's regulated or not, and it's clear it is a regulated activity, no doubt about that, but we need to make a decision on whether it's a significant activity. Is this a significant activity and anybody's opinion on the commission? Are you all on mute? All I hear is Sue's dogs.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, Sue.
Brian came upstairs, the puppy's barking.
Yeah, they're, they're speaking for you. So I, I, I assume nobody sees this as a significant activity, I, I don't.
Russ, I don't, I don't either, uh, as far as wetlands are concerned.
Okay.
I do have a question, though, if we go, uh, just to go back. So if, if we're doing the walk, though, because I know it's been, what? How long since, are the wetlands still, um, flagged? So when we go for the walk to view the property and view the driveways, are the wetlands still flagged?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're over that one. So the next one is, do we have a public hearing? We can only have a parent, public hearing if it's a significant activity, which we just decided it's not. But we can also have a public hearing because it's in the public's interest. I know the public is interested here. I see no reason not to have a public hearing and not allow people to have a say or present evidence that maybe we don't see. Um, I think it's better that way. I know that if this was a subdivision somewhere else, um, this would fly through, I think, but it's not somewhere else and there are people who are concerned. Does anybody on the commission have a problem if we have a public hearing? Or do you feel that we shouldn't?
I think for the history and the interest in this, that I think it would be better going forward with our decision-making if we open it up to the public.
Rob?
I, I'm sorry, I have a coyote going through my yard and my dog's chasing him.
Go get your dog!
I'll be right back.
Could you tell me if you want a public hearing first? Andy?
Yes, I do think we should.
Okay.
To the public.
Uh, I would agree with Rob, I think we should open or have a public hearing on this. I suspect we'll get enough signatures on a petition to have one anyway. And I want to be absolutely clear and clean and upfront with everything that goes forward with this.
Okay, therefore I suggest we set a public hearing for 7 o'clock, July 22nd, Julie? I believe that's a Tuesday?
Um.
I'm getting in from the Rocky, a two-week trip to the Rocky Mountains with my kids on the 21st, so.
22nd, I believe, let me double check, that could be Board of Finance.
No, no, it, it's a Tuesday night, isn't it?
Board of Finance is Tuesday night, too. This seems awfully late for the Board of Finance. Board of Finance is the third Tuesday?
Yeah, we're the fourth. Maybe the 28th is the fourth Tuesday and I'm wrong?
No, you're, you've got it right, the chairman.
The 28th is the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, so it would be on the 28th of July.
7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock.
Okay.
With the meeting, regular meeting to follow with the woods on the agenda if we choose to vote at that time.
Okay.
Now, Marjorie, I know you're on the phone, I miss you, Marjorie, I'm glad you're here. Um, I, I will allow you to speak in the event that you want to be an intervenor or the party you represent wants to be an intervenor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's good to hear you.
It's lovely to see all of you. I hope everybody is well. Um, I suspect there may be an intervention.
Okay, would you like to do that now to make it easier?
I don't, we have to submit the paperwork for it, Mr. Chairman, but we'll do it this week.
Okay, so we'll expect that. And Mark, would you make sure when we get the paperwork, we will notify you? Make sure whatever you send us, you send them, okay?
We will do that, if it would be convenient, um, we'd like to do that through ShareFile. It would actually be easier that way. And so if I get the contact information, we will give them permission to download our material.
Thank you.
Is that good? Marjorie, it saves paper, it's just a waste of paper to be doing this any other way. Are you okay with that? Did she go away?
She's on mute, she's on mute.
I did not, I did not mute her.
Okay, she's okay, all right. So, so we will, um, we will expect that and, um, so ahead of time, I'm going to ask the commission to, um, to approve the intervenors that would be submitted by Ms. Shamsky, um, ahead of time. So I'm going to make a motion to approve any intervenors who want to become intervenors that submit, um, before the next meeting. That's my motion.
Can we do that, Russ?
Because if not, we have to approve them. I guess we could approve them at the next meeting. You're right, Rob, we could approve them at the next meeting. I, I just, see, Mark doesn't legally have to send them anything until they're interveners and I want to make it so Mark sends them things before the meeting and well before the meeting, so that they have a reasonable chance to, to review all this stuff. And I really don't want to go into another, uh, second public hearing just because I'd like to, based on what I see here, I'd like to give everybody a chance to, to have their opinion on it and then close it and then move on to what, what decision we need to make. But Mark, it sounds like you're going to send Marjorie whatever she needs.
If she gets her paperwork in next week, I mean, it's, once it's filed, I mean, I know that the commission can rule even if the next meeting is prior to the hearing acceptance, we will have sent that information to them.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll say for the record, I don't have an issue with any intervenor. Does anybody else on the commission?
I don't.
Margaret, I'm sorry, I'm killing mosquitoes, I know, I know you hate that. So that's it, anybody have anything else? Is there anything else on the agenda, Julie, I don't know about?
No, there's not. There's not.
Wow, so I think.
Russ, just a quick question, so who's gonna contact us as far as going out there then, um, for the site visit?
I will work with Mark to, to get that done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will it, Russ?
We, we can have a meeting and do it, but that means that the owners have to allow the public to attend because it's a public meeting if we have a meeting. Now, I heard, and people like Marjorie or Gil, I, I will ask Gil, I heard that you don't have, the owners don't have to allow the public to go on their property cause they obviously have um some liability if somebody trips and falls and hurts themselves. But I, 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 I'm tending to think this might be better as a meeting. I mean, commissions, all the commissions I know tend to shy away from that. Um, just cause it's a problem getting owners to really sign on to anybody from the public showing up. Sue, I, I, let's just do it two by two. I will coordinate with Mark, it's gonna be more work for Mark, but um.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with Mark.
So you'll coordinate with him and then you'll let us know?
Well, actually, I'm gonna go to you guys first and have you give me dates.
Okay.
And so maybe team up with somebody, Sue, one, one other member, and then get a date between the two of you and then give me that date. And who, like you and Andy, team up and give me a date, I'll, I'll team up with Rob.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Andy, that sound good?
Sounds fine to me. I'm working in town most of the time now, so I'm very available.
Okay, everybody, um, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you very much, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Night.